Yeah, I was watching. Should be up in the news.
Oh, oh. Well, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. We will initially convene as the Housing Authority Board, and I'd like to introduce Commissioner Paul Reynolds tonight.
Thank you.
I would ask Mr. Krupp to take the role. I thought I'd throw Paul in before you did that.
Ah, well, it's a beautiful spring evening, so good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Commissioner Bernard here. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
And Chair Ludlow.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, you please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I smile a lot because I actually read the Pledge of Allegiance, and there is no comma after nation, and so you should be putting it all together, and I've been bugging people a lot about it. It sounded just beautiful out there tonight, so thank you very much. The Housing Authority Public Hearing. So, Mr. Krupp, would you like to announce this?
Certainly. This is a public hearing to consider the 2014 annual plan for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and I'm going to ask Mr. Chuck Robbins, our Housing Authority Director, to give you a quick staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Chuck Robbins, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. What you have before you is the Housing Authority Plan, which is a comprehensive guide to the Housing Authority of Clackamas County policies, programs, options, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. It's intended to inform HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, residents and the public of public housing, and the public of public housing mission for serving the needs of low-income and very low-income families, and our strategies for addressing those needs. The plan really comes in two parts. First is a five-year plan that describes the mission of the agency and its goals and objectives, and the second is the annual plan that covers policies and procedures of the agency. What you have in front of you is the annual plan for 2014, which is the fourth year of our five-year plan. Plan has three major sections. First is an update on activities to be undertaken during the coming year in the housing choice vouchers, which is our Section 8 voucher program, and the public housing asset management programs, and then also any count our agency-wide initiatives we're taking. It also has policy and procedure changes in the housing choice voucher and public housing programs, and includes a summary of data for families on the housing choice voucher and public housing wait lists. We've gone through a fairly extensive citizen participation process to get here. This plan was prepared by staff. It was reviewed by the Resident Advisory Board. On January 14th, we also had a 45-day public comment period. During that time, we received one comment. It was from Legal Aid, basically thanking the Housing Authority for its continued leadership in affirmatively furthering fair housing in the county and supporting the changes in the plan that reduce the number of vouchers that have been allocated to preferences. So that kind of gives you an update of what's, or, you know, explanation of what that plan is, not asking the Board for any kind of action today. This is just a public hearing. We will be asking the Board to convene on April 3rd, a special meeting of the Housing Authority Board in order to approve this plan. So I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you've got.
Commissioners, have any questions or comments? All right, I'm opening the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter this evening. Now, the cards I have yet do not indicate that, so we'll give a couple minutes if anybody wants to talk about this matter tonight. I'll close the public hearing and announce there will be no Board action on this item, as said by Chuck Robbins tonight. It will come back for adoption at the April 3rd, 2014 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Now, let me think about that. Will it be us, or will it be the Housing Authority first? It'll be us? This is finalized to the extent it'll go to the Board, or back to the Housing Authority for any final action?
You'll be sitting as the Housing Authority Board.
Oh, it says here County Commission, that's why I said. So I will be sitting as the Board yet again, the Board, Housing Authority Board, and then eventually, I believe it does come back to the Commission also on the consent item, right?
No. No. Actually, I'm sorry, at the April 3rd meeting, you'd be convening as the Housing Authority Board, at which time we'd be asking you to approve the annual plan, would then turn around and make whatever changes need to be made, and then get it submitted to HUD by April 17th.
Yeah, I understand. My point is that on my script it says we'll come back and meet on this matter as the Board of County Commissioners. In essence, that's true, plus Paul Reynolds in this case. So that's all I wanted to make sure we understand each other. So that isn't on that matter unless any Commissioner wants to make any comment?
No, I mean, it's confusing because the next item is the Housing Authority.
I know.
It's different, that's why.
So we're still convening as the Housing Authority. Now, Mr. Krupp, what's our next matter?
Okay, you have a consent agenda. I'm going to ask your clerk to read the consent agenda for you.
There's one item on the Housing Authority consent agenda. It's in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the third quarter of fiscal year 2014.
All right. I'm just curious about, because I didn't catch that, but how much are we writing off? Is that reasonable to ask? I didn't see it in the material, nor did I seek it out. Chuck Robbins, you got an answer for that, or Cindy Becker?
It is pretty small.
So I'm embarrassed to say I don't know either. It should be on that form. It's generally in the...
Well, certainly, I'll entertain a motion in the meantime, so...
I move we approve the Housing Authority consent agenda.
Now, you know, this is the second time you've done this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I remove...
You're so helpful.
I resent my...
Commissioner Reynolds, I recognize you.
I move we approve the Housing Authority consent agenda.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, that's more appropriate. Motion made by Commissioner Reynolds, second by Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Smith just pointed out the dollar amount of $2,320.41.
That is correct.
You know it's correct, you didn't find it.
Yeah, I did. Mary saved me, as always.
Mary's right on there. All right, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Paul?
Actually, Commissioner Schrader.
Oh, Schrader.
I've been trying to send. Okay, I just want to clear that the purpose is, the approval, what this is, is approval to write off uncollectible rents, late charges, and maintenance expenses for the third quarter of fiscal year 2014. So that's what is entailed in that $2,000.
Good point. Period of time, quarter. That's not that bad. I know a lot of companies in the business of collecting rents, let alone, and their rate is a lot higher than that, so, good job. All right, any further discussion on this item? I'll ask the clerk to take the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 6-0. I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Reynolds, I want to thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
And now, it's time for Citizens Communication. I have some cards here. We'll call you up in twos. It's Les Poole and Mac Woods.
Good evening, Les Poole, Gladstone. Been getting a lot of calls. I don't know how many of you have driven by the Trolley Trail lately, and I wouldn't keep talking about light rail if I wasn't getting a lot of calls and a lot of feedback about what we got for our money. This may be the last time, hopefully in a long time, that I talk about what's occurred there, but the roads are falling apart, and the county got hosed, and I can't think of a better way of describing it. And it's unfortunate that a lot of the folks that created that situation aren't here, but one of them is, and that's Commissioner Bernard, who over a period of years participated in a process and refused to recuse himself over and over as mayor of Milwaukee, as a county commissioner. And the reason I bring this up is that while light rail may have negative impacts in some areas, such as where it's gone through the Trolley Trail, right around the stations, that's where all the rezoning and the investment in urban renewal occurs. That's where you want to own property. That's where you want to buy property. Could you bring that map up here? It's very troubling to me that over time, we've heard a variety of things in these chambers, but this is Block 37 in downtown Milwaukee. Mr. Bernard owns a couple of lots there that have his garage on it that were purchased in the 80s. Not here to question that. What I'm here to question is his interest in other properties that he's purchased. There was one in 2005. That property's never been mentioned. I think it's pretty obvious that when you have interest in properties, or you are financially affected by a project such as this, whether it's short-term construction impacts, long-term construction impacts, whether or not you've bought property and you're going to benefit or not, if there's any question, one should recuse themselves. This is downtown Milwaukee. I've heard Mr. Bernard tell us that he owns five lots in downtown Milwaukee, after repeatedly only declaring two. Now, I looked at the ethics complaint records a while back, and the statements of economic interest only showed a couple. I'm here to let you all know that there is enough video, and there is plenty of information to raise questions about what has occurred and why I am not supporting him for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
So actually, on that map, you have a star on the left-hand side bottom.
I have no stars on it.
But what is that?
It's just a generic map.
What is that? You indicated...
Why don't you come and show us what property you own?
Okay, I don't own all those properties.
Well, I believe that. I'm just bringing that map around.
The map is starred suggesting that I own that property. I do not. And I have not bought any properties since 1991.
All right, we're going to let it go now. We're going to let it go now, Les. You have your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Woods?
Chair Ludlow and Clackamas County Commissioners. I am MacArthur Woods. I live in Clackamas County. Interesting, because you know very well, Mr. John Ludlow, all about the real estate, and this comes from the Tax Assessor's Office. I'm only getting on time. I ain't ready to start talking yet, but just for explanation, for knowledge, you can explain this probably better than us can.
Hold on, Mac, hold on. Will you put it back to three minutes? We want to hear all of what Mac has to say.
Thank you, Chair. He's a realtor like me. I've only been one for 34 years. I think he's got seniority on me.
All right.
And, thank you for getting the clock started.
On your own, buddy.
I filed a records request last October 28th, 2013. I'm learning a lot. I don't have a day of college, but by the school of hard knocks, I'm learning what I didn't know about legal matters. I've learned that attorneys are not above the law. I got the proof. We'll talk about that some other time. And I also done a records request from the Ethics Commission, and I got the full story, of which somebody may have some explaining to do. Because of time, I want to read a short letter. Goes clear back before I was even coming to these meetings, and it was signed by the then-chair and a wonderful lady that does good things. Mary, I won't call her last name out of respect, but we would all be clapping if I did. I have a letter here I want to read. Make it short and sweet.
You better hurry.
This is a letter to somebody in the past. He says, "I am responding to your inquiry about the original complaint I filed against Mr. Bernard and the Secretary of State resolution of the complaint letter attached. You will find a partial response to my complaint that fines Mr. Bernard $12,800. I would suggest that you contact the Secretary of State's office, request both pieces, my complaint and the fines Mr. Bernard had to pay. I believe there is a provision where the public taxpayers paid for his mistakes." They did it. However, let me clarify that your complaint and my previous complaint are not related in the least. My complaint was about misrepresenting of campaign contributions. Yours is about illegally using his office for personal gain. Additionally, my complaint about Mr. Bernard occurred when he was mayor of Milwaukee. Yours was filed against him in his role as a county commissioner. If it would be helpful, I would certainly be willing to sign a letter or submit this or another document to make these clarifications clear, as per the record. But it is clear that our complaints are not completely different, Matt, are, skip the word "not," are completely different matters, and while both are regarding Mr. Bernard, they are not related in substance or time. I have mailed you a copy of the Secretary of State's letter dated 4/26/06, the letter to Mr. Bernard. It's all of public record, as the tax records are public records too. There's a lot to know that you don't know, County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thanks, Mac. I'm sure we'll be back next time.
Somebody's going to be fessing up pretty soon. Have a good day. Thank you.
All right, for possibly a palate cleanser, we will take Tina Olson.
I'm giving you credit in advance. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Ludlow. I am up here again. I actually was at a party last night and ran into Representative Kinnamara and his wife, and they proceeded to tell me that their next-door neighbor, an 80-year-old veteran, came to the VSO office, and there was two signs on there saying that they moved, which actually they haven't moved yet. So he came over here, and nobody was over here, and he gave up. And I was thinking, this was exactly the same thing I testified about, that the confusion of older veterans.
What, I'm sorry, I'll give you next time. What date was that?
This was just four days ago.
And so what day of the week was that, Tina?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. At what time of day again?
Sherry said probably around 1:00.
1:00 p.m.?
Yes, because he came home and talked to her and said that he couldn't get anywhere.
All right, go ahead.
And that was the exact thing I had to testify against, because of these older veterans are getting confused. So, again, I don't, because he had two brochures on that window, and I went over there today, actually, and I seen them, and the stand-up brochure was on the front, and on the bottom it says, "We've moved to the Public Services Building," but they're still there. So I don't know where they're at in this process of moving. It is confusing to me, more or less an 80-year-old veteran. So I'm just asking the Commissioners to check into this, to see there's no confusion, because these are the reasons why veterans give up, because they can't figure out what's going on. So that is one thing. And second thing, as you noted, that I listened to the meeting last week about Craig Roberts, Sheriff Craig Roberts came in here about deployment rates. I've been testifying about this for two years. He's just a good boss, and when they get back, they have a job. Most of ones that are out here, we lose our jobs, and it's under the redeployment Act of 1994 that they're supposed to keep the jobs. So I have National Guardsmen coming up to me on a daily basis saying they lost their jobs. So I appreciate Sheriff Craig Roberts that he's helping his people in the sheriff's office. I do respect that, but as again, he lets them keep their job. Most of us out here don't. So they can't afford, small businesses can't afford to keep them on. You know, that's almost nine months out of a year that they cannot pay someone, and they can't afford that. So I would ask the Commissioners to take a look at that also. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tina.
You guys do a good job, and I get tired of some people come up here and say that you're not doing a good job, which I'm actually out there doing the job myself and listening to people. So until they're willing to walk beside me and listen to some of these veterans, I don't think you should complain. So anyways, I give you guys kudos.
Thank you. I think you're going to be at the April 5th event Stand Up 2014, are you?
I am.
I will announce completely that in the record here soon, but it's a veterans event at Clackamas Community College.
I do. I wish for the best for this event.
All right. Again, they have a great guy who ties balloons.
I heard that he's going to be there with these children.
That's right. Have a good time with the kids.
I will be watching for this.
That's my motto. Listen, I appreciate your time. I'll let you go, and listen, Cindy Becker, anytime staff is in here and they can answer a question, especially about veterans, I'd ask you to come forward and answer a couple of questions, can you? Cindy Becker? You get to go, though.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it, though. All right. So real basically, because we've heard this kind of thing before, and I think the public should know, you know, we have moved the offices. They're in this building where we're sitting currently. It is handicapped accessible. Jim Bernard said, you know, that he checked that out personally, they'll leave the door open during hours, but is there any reason why they wouldn't be open at that time of day that was stated?
Mr. Chair, this is the first that I've heard about this, because they haven't all moved in, so I don't, we need to check on who put that notice up there and why it's there. This is the first I've heard.
Okay. So if we could do this as a follow-up, because, you know, we are sensitive to the fact that some people are not happy about this move, okay? We've heard that.
No, really?
But now we want to, the understatement, but now we want to make it as best we can, the most palatable that we can be, and that means getting, disseminating the information and making sure that that door is propped open at the appropriate hours. Would you agree?
Absolutely. Again, this is the first I've heard of it, and I've already sent an email to staff asking about it.
I bet you did.
Yes.
Didn't mean to call you for it and put you on the spot, but again, we want to be sensitive to the needs of these people and certainly happenings. While we're adjusting to a new office environment, things happen. We just want to make sure that it's there for them, okay? Commissioner Savis?
Just one more question for Cindy. So the hours of the veterans' office are from what to what?
I don't know the exact hours in this new building, because some people work from 7:30 to 5:30, so the office typically are open from 7 till 6, and it'll be four days a week, like it is today in the old building.
Is there any possibility that for some reason, the current veterans' office may have been closed, or the door locked, or whatever, for a short period of time?
It is possible. Again, I...
That's what she's going to check out.
I'm going to check out. As soon as I find out, I'll be happy to communicate with the Board.
You don't know that they closed for lunch hour or anything, right?
No.
Okay.
You don't know that he tried the door.
That's true. Well, the door should be propped open. We talked about, there's some sensitivities to this.
We talked about that building.
Oh, on the other building, do you know what's posted on that building?
First I heard that there was a sign that said they'd moved.
It was on that building.
Not on our building.
Oh.
So they may not, he may not have tried the door. He may have just seen the sign.
I see. I was confused.
So again, I just sent an email out to staff. As soon as I find out, I will let you know.
Everybody who loves a veteran or is a veteran out there should know that we're trying to do the best for veterans. We really are. We're taking a lot of input. We have a group, we have a committee, we have you and your professional staff, and Jim, like I say, has actually visited the new one. I have not, but just know that we're trying to do the best. We'll move people over from the old one and help them understand that this is the one now, and the hours of operation.
Right, and if Ms. Olson hears that, please feel free to call us, and you don't need to wait till this...
And what's the phone number?
My phone number?
What's the phone number to call? Us, you said.
Well, us is me. I can give you my phone number.
Well...
I don't know that you want me to do that.
I don't think you want to do that. Anyway, we should make that...
Call our offices, and we can certainly find out.
Yeah, Mary's going to pop it up on the screen. That's just the way she is. But anyway, I'll let you go. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification. And any difficulties, really, as to the hours of operation, or what building you're supposed to be in, any confusion for that, really needs to be reported to Cindy's office, because we can't make it better unless we know what the problem is, okay, with fairness.
And they can call our office, and we'll find things out.
Mary did pop it up on the screen. You can see there, folks, the main number is 655-8581, and we will filter you to the proper people, okay?
And Chair, if I may, just for, so people who just saw what was on the screen, that is not the veterans' address, and that's not the veterans' hours, so...
Yeah, good point. All right, now, we are to the consent agenda. I'll announce the fact that in advance that E1 has been removed. E1, we had to put on yesterday because it was a lease that had to be signed that was right to that point where it should be signed, but as leases go, it had another glitch in it, and so legal staff has asked that to be removed. So I'll ask the clerk to read the remainder of the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Portland for homeless management information system services, approval of a construction contract with West Tech Construction and Community Development for the Southeast Bell Avenue Improvements Project. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number Four to the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for emergency relief program project funding. Approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with Oak Lodge Sanitary District for the Boderman Creek Fish Habitat Restoration Project. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Business and Community Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Metro to authorize access to Metro's River Island Natural Area through Barton Park. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, we have approval of contract number 932554 with Metro for the Spring Park Natural Area Enhancement Project, and that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. Any Commissioners wish to remove or pull any items on the consent agenda, or if they have a specific question? I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
District Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. It's time for our county administrator update.
So I have several items. Before I get into them, though, I do have the veterans' office number, and I'll go ahead and share that for folks here. So folks can find that on our website as well, as well as information about office hours and information about the move as well. Okay, really good news. In fact, everything I've got for you here is good news. Our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department was awarded some $2.5 million of grants from the Oregon Health Authority, some six different grants. These funds will help us focus on expanding our mental health services in school-based health centers. It'll help us expand our jail diversion services, mental health prevention and promotion, crisis services in the sheriff's office, or through the sheriff's office, and also at our Center Stone programs, and then programs to serve families and youth, and to continue funding early assessment and the Support Alliance effort. So that's, it's an outstanding opportunity for us to be able to serve citizens in Clackamas County. I wanted to extend a special thanks to Jill Archer, who's our Behavioral Health Director, because she played a lead role in making sure we had access to be able to receive these grant funds to do these good things. Want to share that?
That's just wonderful.
Yeah, it's really neat stuff. It's really neat stuff. And then, I wanted to remind folks who are watching the program that we have an extended invitation to visit the county website at www.clackamas.us and please take the community survey. It's right up there. The link is right up on the splash page. We're interested in getting community feedback through the website. You've got that on your announcement as well, Mr. Chair.
It's giving you a bad time, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Then, I wanted to share with you some information I received earlier this week from the Oregon Employment Department. We received long-term employment projections and the state is projecting that in the 10-year period that began in 2012 through 2022, that we can expect an addition of some 22,000 new jobs in Clackamas County. And that's on top of what would be 31,000 job openings that are created as workers change occupations and retire. Of those 22,000 new jobs during this period of time, nearly 21,000 of them will be in the private sector, primarily in trade, transportation, utilities and professional and business services. In fact, we can expect that all sectors and occupations in Clackamas County during this period of time are going to experience new job opportunities and we can actually experience the largest percentage growth in jobs in the construction industry as the local economy continues to improve. So, more good news to share with you about the state of the local economy. And then, I received a copy of an email that our Public Governmental Affairs staff received. I just kind of wanted to share with you. It's great to get kudos. This is a letter regarding the work that our road staff are doing out in the field and I'm going to read it to you. Says, "Hi, sir. There was a crew working on Tolliver Road this morning trimming roadside trees for eventual paving work. I didn't get any names, but y'all will figure that out. I send this email to put the whole crew on report. They were efficient, courteous, careful and darn helpful besides. They stacked up any burnable wood in my yard, sprayed preservative on some of the cut-off branches and cut off everything they needed to and nothing else. And my German Shepherd didn't even bark at them. They were so cool. This is really my tax dollars at work. Warm regards." And I'll leave the gentleman's name to the imagination at this point to protect his privacy, but I just kind of wanted to share that good set of words with you this evening.
I wish we'd had more letters like that. I encourage anybody listening or watching to send in letters like that. They're certainly an anomaly at times considering. Is that your complete report?
That's my report, yes.
I want to compliment you. That was the longest one you've done since you've been here. You've done good.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Start with the commissioners' communication and this time we'll start with Commissioner Bernard.
Great. So, on Wednesday, Paul and I attended a public safety forum at North Clackamas sponsored by North Clackamas and Oregon City Chamber. That was our sheriff, police chiefs, fire departments and ambulances talking about the new agreement, the ambulance contract, some of the new portions of that and how, working as a team, they've been able to attack the heroin epidemic in a much more coordinated way. So, it was a very good forum. Obviously, I think that our sheriff and the Drug Task Force has gotten a lot of people together and they're doing some good work. Then, I attended Oregon City Rotary where Congressman Schrader spoke about, he said it was the first time he had experienced in a long time that the government was actually working. Now, I fell to the floor in shock. He said that, you know, one thing about the budget issue when they shut the government down is it got people talking again and thinking about what went wrong with that idea. And that, because of that, they've been working together and actually passing some bills and moving forward. They even passed a budget which they had not done in many years. At least they moved a budget forward. And then, I went to the HBA Build Right Conference, Land Development Planning Process and Pitfalls. And one of the folks up there actually complimented Clackamas County in the work that they're doing and in previous work they did when they had, at the time when we were really busy, we had kind of a coordinator position that kind of got people all together, that would be the service providers, sewer water and all those people in the same room and worked together to move projects forward. And during the downturn in the economy, that person was let go. But we are adding back some new folks. It's getting busier there and so that's quite an improvement. And then, today we had our county elected officials lunch and talked about with all of the other elected officials how things are going in their part of the woods. We also met to talk about the Clackamas Regional Center Working Group got together and talked a little bit about some of the projects that are moving forward and some of the time constraints and challenges that are before those projects. And I did talk to our strategic planning consultant on the phone the other day. I look forward to our retreat and an opportunity to work through some of the issues of concern to the citizens of Clackamas County. And with that, it was a great St. Patrick's Day.
Aye, indeed. Where's your green's past. Commissioner Smith?
Well, thank you. On St. Patrick's Day, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to Portland Thunder's first arena football game at the New Moda Center, hence the Memorial Coliseum. And I have to say, for a brand-new team, a brand-new venue and an off-year, there was probably at least three-quarters or more people in attendance at that game. And it was a lot of fun. It was very fast-moving. In fact, I'm told on ESPN Sports that one of the plays that were on that game made it into the top 10 plays of the week. And most of them were basketball, but there was a really good diving catch in the end zone and it was great and everybody stood up and cheered and it was great. And I tell you, the people just loved it. So, I hope the owner of the team, Terry Amert, does well because it's quite a significant investment. He's a Clackamas County Business Manager resident and he took a chance to do this to bring inexpensive family sports entertainment to the area and my hats are off to him. I really appreciate that. I've been working on a plan with this board and the Associated Oregon Counties. I met with Rick Gruen or Forrester about being able to take control of our federal timberlands and bring them back from Congress and give them back to the people of the state of Oregon. I feel that's a very important issue. We're moving forward on that and that's great. Like Jim, I talked to the company that's going to be heading up our strategic plan and they asked questions, you know, what do you think, the people, what do you think is the most top items? And we went down the list. And how's the government working and what are you hearing? And so, it was really productive and we hope to come out with a codified set of goals, not just aspirational, but goals that have real teeth in them, to move this county forward in a way that we feel we need to grow and provide jobs and the things that the commission has control over. So, I think that's going to be a lot of fun. And that's about it.
Thank you, Tudy. Martha?
All right. I actually want to start by thanking Mr. Krupp for his economic update. I actually took a look at the Clackamas County Economic Indicators and we have 1,400 more jobs, total employment, in this past year than we had a year ago. Mostly those jobs have been in manufacturing, retail trade, professional and business services. And the unemployment rate for January was 6.8%, which was 1.4% lower than the same time a year ago. So, things are starting to tick up, not only at the state level, but as we look at our own local county economic indicators. I had an opportunity to meet with one of our staff folks, Dan Chandler, about employment land updates and how it appears as if we're going to be moving forward with a policy to identify employment lands throughout the county to get a handle on what our needs are and actually not just to identify them, but to really do a study about what our long-term projected needs are going to be, which is kind of like looking into a crystal ball with an economist. But, you know, we might as well give it a go and see what we come up with. On Monday, I spent, it was a really busy day. I spent an hour with the Clackamas County Soil, Water and Conservation District, speaking to them about our agricultural one-stop project, which is a community solutions project. We will be hopefully signing a memorandum of agreement with all the partners on that. We hope in April and have a little celebration about that. They're very excited about it and they are going to be one of the partners in the agricultural one-stop. So, we had a good discussion about water issues. They asked me what they thought they needed to be working on and I said, you know, helping us be knowledgeable about our water sets and what it takes to make sure that our rivers remain clean and that we have the appropriate infrastructure for sewer as well as drinking water. I think those are some key things that that group could help us with as well as conservation easements. I also had an opportunity in one day to drive back and forth to Roseburg. So, I listened to a lot of NPR as I was driving back and forth. I attended the ONC Board of Directors meeting and that is where we had a discussion about the federal legislation dealing with opening up ONC lands for, as Commissioner Smith knows, for harvest. And we also sat through a presentation by the Bureau of Land Management about how they're moving through that process and how they're going to be trying to balance all of the issues. Of course, we believe that the 1937 Act is pretty clear in that ONC lands should be primarily used for timber harvest for revenue to counties. It's pretty specific on that. So, that came across loud and clear with my other colleagues from across the, essentially across the state of Oregon. Last night as well, I attended the Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce Dinner. It was a huge event and a lot of fun, but once people found out I was a county commissioner, I got a lot of questions about potholes. So, it did give me an opportunity to talk to some folks and get out the word that we're doing outreach for transportation maintenance and to talk a little bit about the gap that we have and why we are now in a crisis mode and that if they are interested, to go to our website and take the survey and get involved in the public outreach process. So, that was very productive from that point of view. And finally, I also had a great conversation with our consultant, the person who's going to helping us work through our strategic plan. And like Commissioner Smith, I believe that the questions were excellent and I think it's going to be a very, very productive strategy session that we undertake. So, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Thank you, Chair. I also, as Commissioner Bernard mentioned, attended the public safety meeting on Wednesday morning and was speaking to a number of our fire district folks, both staff and some, one elected. And we also met with the Clackamas Regional Center folks and also expressing their excitement and somewhat gratitude that that one punch through of Monterey, that it's underway. It's part of the congestion problem that's around the town center and it really inhibits their ability to respond to emergencies between one area and another. And for those of you who drive through the town center when it's busy or even the middle of the day, a normal day, it's very tough to get through there and a lot of people want to avoid it and people want people to avoid it. It affects commerce in that area. So, but I did get a lot of support and feedback about the traffic congestion issues in that area and topics about economic development, about what's our next step. And that's why I'm really glad that we're moving forward with our strategic plan because where our focus is and how we better utilize the employment lands we have and try to identify future employment lands for businesses that want to expand that are here today and new businesses that'll come here in the future. So, hopefully, that projection, I would love to see that study and go through the numbers and make sure those are 22,000 additional jobs, not just new jobs because some of them turn. So, that's a pretty significant number. So, that's very promising. The economy is turning around and I'm glad to hear even in a year's time that the employment numbers are up. Number developers, staff, permitting staff, contractors, suppliers, I'm hearing a lot of good feedback where there's an uptick and some of them are going full steam ahead and some aren't quite there yet, but things are looking better and it's kind of an exciting time. I hope we can capitalize on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. I don't want to be too long-winded. I'll just say one thing, as I found out, staff is always watching these shows and it's kind of great because they give answers fairly quickly when they're necessary. At the sign says at the old Veterans Services Office, "We are moving and will be closed April 1st through 7th." So, closed. It should probably say, you know, I mean, it's a process. So, it does say that. So, just in case anybody's wondering what that says. Real quickly, because this is now in the news, we want you to know what the commission is doing about this and that is involving the contract practices at Water Environmental Services. I'd like to offer an explanation as to why the commission and the county administration has not yet made a public statement about the recently published allegations regarding contracting practices and other issues at Water Environmental Services. This was a deliberate decision necessitated by the fact that there are still pending legal issues to be decided by the arbitrator that remain critical to the resolution of this matter. On the advice of our county council, we have not made any public statements. That's not to say the county has not responded at all. Immediately after the arbitrator's ruling, our county administrator, Don Krupp, placed the West Director on administrative leave. Mr. Krupp also ordered an outside review of the contract-related issues. That review is underway and we expect to have a report within the next few weeks. That report will be made public, so available to the public. But we're not waiting to take action. Employees are currently being retrained on public contracting law and we will take whatever action, other actions may be necessary going forward at the direction of the Board of County Commissioners and County Administrator. Mr. Krupp has done an able job in his suggestion that we go forward with this outside investigator and we must be patient for the results. For anybody's ever watched this commission, don't believe that we're shy about putting our two cents forward once we know where the change is lying. We have to know for sure and certain before our top-level staff and/or this commission speaks out on certain issues. That's not to say that we don't speak out on a lot of issues anyway, which we do, but this one is a legal matter and must be handled very appropriately. I want to again mention, Mary, do you have the Stand Up 2014?
I do.
You know, this was put together by some of the people setting up here with me today as well as work from others and we look forward to it being a very successful event. Stand Up 2014, supporting and honoring military and veterans' families because you serve too. There'll be entertainment speakers, food, child-friendly activities, resources, benefits, everything you can imagine there. Really a fun day and we're praying for no rain, of course. April 20, or April 5th, April 5th, 10 to 3 p.m., Gregory Forum, Clackamas Community College. There will be signs leading you to that. Is this information available online, Mary, as well?
Yes.
On our line, probably other places as well. So, you can see who to ask questions of and see the actual website. So, I'm encouraging everybody to come. Yes, I'll be there to type stupid and silly balloons that some kids end up sword fighting with, but hey, we're going to have a good time that day. I attended a meeting in Estacada where a group is looking at a potential bikeway and it's from the city of Estacada to Detroit Lake. Now, if you've ever driven that in Clackamas County, driven it, you will know that's a very, at times, challenging route for a biker to take. Much of it is experienced by a biker, very little is intermediate, but I will tell you that from Estacada, if you follow the river up, you come to two different dams. The aprons on those areas are very wide and afford a great deal of safety to bikers. I would say that this is a great plan and Travel Oregon is about to embrace it. And, but again, it's, the portion, I mean, I like the two-car idea. You come to Estacada, you drop one car, you go up with your bikes and drop it at Faraday Lake and you ride down the hill to Estacada. But that's just my idea of biking. But anyway, it's a great route and I would tell people to be careful. There are six other routes approved by Travel Oregon. Go to their site to find those. Different levels of biking abilities would be necessary, but what a great idea. What I reminded them while I was there is of our Streets- What I reminded them while I was there is of our Street Smart program. We are in an education and outreach program to tell people about Clackamas County roads, which are 52% in poor and fair condition. And Martha mentioned it earlier, we got potholes. I'm really contemplating, and I've mentioned to PGA, Public and Government Affairs, to have a pothole of the week, and a pothole of the month to commemorate what we have out there in Clackamas County. And we'll be out there, commissioners have already been out there, I'm still out there, I'm going to be at the Redland Grange next month to talk about this. Anybody who wants to hear about the Street Smart program and the condition of our roads, I encourage you to call that name, same number that Mary flashed up earlier, the county offices, and ask for somebody to come out and talk about our streets, and we will be glad to be there. So that was a great one, we have mentioned that the scientific-based telephone survey of 400 residents is now over, but as Mr. Krupp said, you can go and take this, this poll, which we find very important to us, online, if you just go to clackamas.us, www.clackamas.us, and take that, it would help. As we've always said, every time we poll every couple of years, it comes out fairly much the same. Whatever public safety means to a lot of people, that's what people want, number one. Number two is, coincidentally, roads are not so coincidental. Now, public safety, as Commissioner Savis has said many times, comes in many forms, is juvenile, community corrections, the sheriff, there's some, some mental involved in that too, we have to take care of the mental problems we find with sheriff's deputies, so do take that poll, that would really help. Let's see, Town Hall? Yes, we have a Town Hall next coming up, April 9th, hosted by the Sandy Chamber of Commerce, Sandy Community Center, 38348 Pioneer Boulevard in Sandy, from 7:00 to 8:30. In September, we'll have one in Estacada, and in November, we'll have one at Happy Valley. I want to say one last thing, and this is my personal opinion, not the commissioners' as yet, we're going to have a study session on the effects of the recently state-passed marijuana laws, and how it affects this county. There are many cities disturbed, we all went down and testified, oh my gosh, but it came to be anyway, and now we have to deal with it. We are allowed a one-year moratorium on allowing pot shops in this county, and all probability and my belief is, we will take that opportunity to find out what we need to do to regulate. There's a lot of unanswered questions from the state on what our rights are, responsibilities are, so we will probably take that year, that's just my opinion, but we'll certainly have some kind of vote on that in the future. The last thing, well, the other thing is, Trimed. Trimed has asked me to come speak to their Board of Directors. Just quit laughing now, this is, I mean, I think it's wonderful that they gave me the opportunity to speak. Now, I'll tell you in advance what I'm, I'm authorized by the board to say, and then the rest of it, I don't know. Yeah, what I'm authorized to say is this. We believe that we may be able to provide service to all Clackamas County residences better, faster, and cheaper, as evidenced by Sandy. Can be. Molala. Wilsonville. So I'm going to tell them that we are going to investigate, this will be on our agenda this year, and we will investigate whether we can do it better, cheaper, and faster to serve all residents of Clackamas County, not the lucky few who live in the district. So we think this is germane. Other cities have said, we too are looking at that, I've invited them to be part of our study, and to see if we can do it better enough, so good, the cities don't have to opt out from Trimed. Now, ladies and gentlemen, should we ever decide after much study, that it is, that we would like to do it better, faster, and cheaper, and it doesn't involve Trimed, the legislature decides that, not us. But it's good to look, it's good to make some points, and it's good to see if maybe that it is possible within this county that we have outstanding transit service. So that's my two cents worth for the night. Unless there's any other business before this commission, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time, and those who came to talk with us, and wish you safety until we meet again, this meeting is adjourned.